Good evening. I'd like to call the regular Borough Council meeting of May 8, 2023 to order. This meeting has been properly advertised in the Hall News Tribune of January 6, 2023, according to Public Law 1975, Chapter 231. Clerk, please call the roll.
Council President Wilberforce.
Present.
Councilman Uraina.
Present.
Councilman Griner.
Present.
Councilwoman DiPiero.
Present.
Councilman Montanez.
Present.
And Councilwoman Cozak.
Present.
Mayor, for the record, all present.
Thank you, Clerk Marler. Will everyone please stand for a moment of silence and to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to introduce Jill Hetzler from Melton Education Foundation. Mrs. Hetzler, please step to the microphone.
Hey, how are you?
Good, thank you. You guys look very distinguished up here right now.
We try. So I'm here today because every year the Milton Education Foundation runs a multitude of fundraisers within the town, and all that money does go back into the schools through teacher grants and staff grants. So if there's something that's a need or a new project that the teachers might want, they apply to us, and if we have the funds for it, we likely will give them to them so that they can make that happen within those classrooms. So what I'm asking today is to be able to use some of the facilities within town. We do two annual clothing drives, one in the spring that would just pass on April 25, and then we do another one in November on Election Day. And we would like to use the gazebo at Gloria Bradford Park for those two events, and then also be able to use Borough Park parking lot for our trunk or treat event, which is on the 28th and 29th this year. Each event pretty much raises around anywhere from $500 to $1,000 each, and that allows us to be able to put that money back in for things like the new playground, the communication boards, keyboard robots, Apple pens, and so maybe some technology needs, and most recently some diversity, equity, inclusion needs within the books that are needed for the curriculum updates within the schools. So I'm hoping that I can have permission for that today, and thank you for your time.
And Jill, as is our practice, we will do it by resolution at the next meeting.
Sure. Do you have any questions for me? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Hetzler, and I will now proceed with the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of April 24, 2023?
I make the motion to approve the minutes of April 24, 2023.
I second the motion to approve the minutes of April 24, 2023.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Next on the agenda is comments from the audience on resolutions. If any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the resolutions, please step to the microphone and identify yourself to the clerk and say your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to resolutions enlisted on the consent agenda. Seeing no one wishing to speak.
Jason. Good evening. George Murray, Forbrook Drive. And I apologize for all the students and parents that have to, for this one. This is not really appropriate one for this meeting. It's more of a fun meeting. But on Resolution 140-2023, there's a resolution for a recreation director will now be taking the role of a pool director for an additional $7,500. When, my question really is, is when will he be performing this as his role of full-time recreation director? What mechanisms are currently in place to track his full-time position and the recreation, and the pool director position at the pool during the summer months? Is this person currently certified as a lifeguard as he may need to intervene in an emergency?
Will let our business administrator answer that?
So no lifeguard certification is necessary. The role of the director is required by the Board of Health, and it's an administrative function. As far as the responsibilities, it's the same as any other official who has a stipend, such as a municipal registrar or deputy registrar, who get paid additional monies to do additional responsibilities.
And how is his hours going to be differentiated between being a pool director and being a... Because you're basically getting paid for two jobs at the same time.
Yeah, it's an additional responsibility into his role as the recreation director.
Okay. Second question is, I see the same resolution. You have a new pool supervisor. How many years has this supervisor worked previously for the pool and performed the training at the pool? Did they ever work as a gate attendant or a lifeguard before coming as supervisor? Because that's usually how the increments go at the pool.
I don't have the answer for you on... I know that that person has been working at the pool for several years. They also worked in the, for the summer camp as a camp leader, so I, but I don't, I'm not privy to that information right now. I don't have it.
Has that person been certified as a lifeguard or supervisor as they also may need to intervene?
None of the supervisors are certified as lifeguards. It's not a requirement for the position.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I will close public comment on resolutions. Next on the agenda, we have bills, claims. Will the clerk please read the Resolution 138 to 2023 by title?
Resolution 138, 2023 is authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Melton in the total amount of $4,145,365.59.
May I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 138 to 2023?
I make the motion to approve the bill list Resolution 138, 2023.
I second the motion to approve the bill list Resolution 138, 2023.
I have a motion by Councilman Griner and a second by Council President Wilberforce. Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Council President Wilberforce.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilman Uraina.
Aye.
Councilman Griner.
Aye.
Councilwoman DiPiero.
Aye.
Councilman Montanez.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Cozak.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the payment of the bills.
When voting on resolutions, all matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and having been reviewed by the Borough Council will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by certification of availability of funds. Are there any questions? Does any council person want to pull any resolution from the consent agenda? There being no request to pull any resolutions, will the clerk please read the consent resolution?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting, and whereas the Borough Clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and Borough Council of the Borough of Melton, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the consent agenda previously prepared by the Borough Clerk be approved without the necessity of having the individual resolutions read by the Borough Clerk.
You have heard the reading of this resolution. It was your pleasure.
I make the motion to approve Resolutions 139 to 2023 through 144, 2023 by consent agenda.
I second the motion to approve Resolutions 139 through 2023 through 144 through 2023 by consent agenda.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Cozak and a second by Councilman Uraina. Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Council President Wilberforce.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Uraina.
Aye.
Councilman Griner.
Aye.
Councilwoman DiPiero.
Aye.
Councilman Montanez.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Cozak.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the payment of the bills.
When voting on resolutions, all matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and having been reviewed by the Borough Council will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by certification of availability of funds. Are there any questions? Does any council person want to pull any resolution from the consent agenda? There being no request to pull any resolutions, will the clerk please read the consent resolution?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting, and whereas the Borough Clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and Borough Council of the Borough of Melton, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the consent agenda previously prepared by the Borough Clerk be approved without the necessity of having the individual resolutions read by the Borough Clerk.
You have heard the reading of this resolution. It was your pleasure.
I make the motion to approve Resolutions 139 to 2023 through 144 to 2023 by consent agenda.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Cozak and a second by Councilman Uraina. Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Council President Wilberforce.
Aye.
Councilman Uraina.
Aye.
Councilman Griner.
Aye.
Councilwoman DiPiero.
Aye.
Councilman Montanez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cozak.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve Resolutions 139, 2023 through 144, 2023.
There will be no public input on introduction of ordinance 23, 15, 23. The introduction summary will be published in the Hall News Tribune on May 12, 2023, and second reading, public hearing, and final adoption will be considered on May 22, 2023. Full copies of the ordinance will be posted on the Borough website, on the bulletin board at the municipal building, and available at no cost to the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. Clerk Marler, will you please read the ordinance by title only?
23, 15, 23, bond ordinance providing for various roadway improvements buying in the Borough of Melton in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating $756,000, therefore inclusive of a State of New Jersey Department of Transportation grant in the amount of $556,530, and authorizing the issuance of $199,470 of bonds or notes of the borough to finance the part of the cost thereof.
May I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 23 to 15, 23?
I make the motion to introduce ordinance 23, 15, 23.
I second the motion to introduce ordinance 23, 1, 1,523.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Cozak and by Council President Wilberforce. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Council President Wilberforce.
Aye.
Councilman Uraina.
Aye.
Councilman Griner.
Aye.
Councilwoman DiPiero.
Aye.
Councilman Montanez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cozak.
Aye.
Mayor, motion carries to introduce ordinance 23, 15, 23.
There will be no public input on introduction of ordinance 23 to 15, 24. The introduction summary will be posted in the Hall News Tribune on May 12, 2023, and second reading, public hearing, and final adoption will be considered on May 22, 2023. Full copies of the ordinance will be posted on the Borough website, on the bulletin board at the municipal building, and available at no cost to the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. Clerk Marler, will you please read the ordinance by title only?
23, 15, 24, is a bond ordinance providing for electric utility capital improvement buying in the Borough of Melton in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating $400,000, therefore and authorizing the issuance of $400,000 of bonds or notes of the borough to finance the cost thereof.
May I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 23 to 15, 24?
I make the, I make the motion to introduce ordinance 23 to 15, 24. I second the motion to introduce ordinance 23 to 15, 24.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Uraina and a second by Councilman Griner. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Council President Wilberforce.
Aye.
Councilman Uraina.
Aye.
Councilman Griner.
Aye.
Councilwoman DiPiero.
Aye.
Councilman Montanez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cozak.
Aye.
Mayor, motion carries to introduce 15, 24.
There will be no public input on introduction of ordinance 23 to 15, 25. The introduction summary will be published in the Hall News Tribune on May 12, 2023, and second reading, public hearing, and final adoption will be considered on May 22, 2023. Full copies of the ordinance will be posted on the Borough website, at the municipal building, and available at no cost to the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. Clerk Marler, will you please read the ordinance by title only?
23, 15, 25, is a bond ordinance providing for various 2023 water utility capital improvements and acquisitions buying in the Borough of Melton in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating $515,000, therefore and authorizing the issuance of $515,000 of bonds or notes of the borough to finance the cost thereof.
May I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 23, 15, 25?
I make the motion to introduce ordinance 23, 15, 25.
I second the motion to introduce ordinance 23, 15, 25.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanez and a second by Councilwoman DiPiero. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Council President Wilberforce.
Aye.
Councilman Uraina.
Aye.
Councilman Griner.
Aye.
Councilwoman DiPiero.
Aye.
Councilman Montanez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cozak.
Aye.
Motion carries to introduce 23, 15, 25.
There will be no input, public input on introduction of ordinance 23 to 15, 26. The, and the introduction summary will be posted on the Hall News Tribune on May 12, 2023, and second reading, public hearing, and final adoption will be considered on May 22, 2023. Full copies of the ordinance will be posted on the Borough website, on the bulletin board at the municipal building, and available at no cost in the office of a municipal clerk between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. Clerk Marler, will you please read the ordinance by title only?
23, 15, 26, an ordinance to delete Chapter 10 Personnel Policies, Section 21 Ethics Board of the Revised General Ordinances of the Borough of Melton, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, and transfer the responsibility of ethics complaints to the State of New Jersey, Department of Community Affairs, Division of Local Government Services, the Local Binance Board.
May I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 23 to 15, 26?
I make the motion to introduce ordinance 23, 15, 26.
I second the motion to introduce ordinance 23, 15, 27.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Cozak and a second by Council President Wilberforce. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Council President Wilberforce.
Aye.
Councilman Uraina.
Aye.
Councilman Griner.
Aye.
Councilwoman DiPiero.
Aye.
Councilman Montanez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cozak.
Aye.
Mayor, this motion carries to introduce 15, 26.
We have reports from each department. First, we'll hear the report from the Department of Public Safety Chair, Mike Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Fire Chief Ray Jolly reported the Melton Fire Department responded to 14 fire calls for the month up to this date for a total of 67 man-hours. There were three drills in which the department trained on forcible entry, radio communications, and live fire training at the Middlesex County Fire Academy for a total of 65 man-hours. We had worked nights on all the Mondays of the month. All the equipment was checked for a total of 85 man-hours. Our special assignment for this month was the Easter flower sale. Repairs on Agent 62 and 72 are completed at this time, and the memorial monument has been set and completed. In closing, be reminded that members are needed. Candidates interested in joining the Melton Fire Department are encouraged to stop by the firehouse Monday night at 6:30 p.m. or email the department. Police Chief Kenley reported between April 1, 2023 and April 26, 2023, police have responded to 626 calls for service. During this period, police conducted 51 radar details in numerous locations. Police made 62 motor vehicles. Police made sixty-two motor vehicle stops during this period. Five arrests were made, which included burglary, contempt of court, and drunk driving. Police responded to twelve motor vehicle accidents, which included minor injuries. Residents are reminded to continue to drive safely and use extra caution as utility and roadwork projects continue throughout town. We appreciate your cooperation. Cooperation and patience during these projects. The Milltown Police Department is currently accepting applications for full and part-time police dispatchers. Applications are available online at www dot milltown nj dot org or in person at the Milltown Borough Clerk's Office. Please continue to report this, report suspicious activity, traffic concern, and non-emergent type calls to seven-three-two-eight-two-eight-one-one-zero-zero. Emergency and life-threatening calls use nine-one-one. Any questions and/or complaints can be submitted by using the official Borough website or calling the Milltown Police directly. The Milltown Police would like to congratulate the Joyce Comfort School graduating class of twenty-two thirty. You have all worked hard and we are very proud of our graduates. We wish you the best in your future and we are confident that you will do well. Rescue Squad Captain Will Kaplan reported after three years of absence, we are preparing to resume our door-to-door fundraiser in May. As in the past few years, the Milltown Rescue Squad would like to leave a fund drive, fund drive reminder note at the residence. If we stopped by our first visit and the residents are not home, thank you in advance, your assistance in this matter. We appreciate your continued support of our organization. Mayor, this concludes my reports for this evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman Irina. Next, we'll hear from the Department of Utilities, Councilwoman Di Piero.
Thank you, Mayor. The Utilities Department report is as follows. The Milltown Electric Utility is responsible for ensuring that the residents have reliable electric, electric services, as well as emergency repairs and improvements to the infrastructure. Some of our responsibilities include maintaining all of the overhead electric wiring in wind utility poles, working with the billing department to ensure that the borough's three thousand-plus electric meters are functioning properly, keeping all the borough's streetlights working for public safety, connecting new customers to our grid, trimming trees and removing dangerous tree branches, restoring power after storms, diagnosing power problems for our customers. We recently installed the poles and netting at Michelin Field to protect the children in the playground. We are available twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year for our residents. Please use caution while driving around town. If you see trucks with flashing yellow lights, slow down and expect people to be working in the roadway. Subscribe to Nixle to get up-to-date reporting on addages. The Water Sewer Department reported. The Milltown Water and Sewer Department oversees all the water and waste that flows through the pipes in our town. Some of the responsibilities include daily work orders that include changing old meters for new. Markets, which is the blue and green paint, uses show where residents' water and sewer lines are and answering any emergencies that may occur. The members of the Water and Sewer Department do pump checks each day at our stations, which are located on Elkins Lane, Church Street, Riva Ave, and Brook Drive to make sure they are working correctly. The water tower by Home Depot is also checked every day. The first water tower built in nineteen oh seven in the borough was located on Ford Ave and served the Michelin homes for the factory. The first water tower, it can still be seen on Ford Ave today. Mayor, this concludes my reports.
Thank you, Councilwoman Di Piero. Next, we will hear from the report, uh, we'll hear the depart, the report from the Department of Public Works and Recycled, or Recycling chaired by Councilman Montanez.
Thank you, Mayor. The Department of Public Works staff have been very busy this spring preparing the baseball, baseball and soccer fields for the various ongoing sports programs. Soil, seed, and fertilizer have been put down in the, in, at the area near the pickleball court at Michelin Field. Cleaning of vegetation at Schwenderman Cabin has taken place and will be ongoing. Various tasks have begun at the Borough Pool to prepare for the upcoming summer swimming season. Rural repairs continue at various locations throughout town. All asphalt pipes have been cleaned out for this quarter. We have started replacing the missing stormwater drain markers. Public Works, Works has many responsibilities such as picking up garbage, food repairs, maintenance of the parks, and public buildings. We maintain and repair all our vehicles as well as assisting in the preparation for many community activities, such as Fourth of July, Earth Day, Milltown Day, and the annual tree lighting. We are always willing to help our residents when they need us with various questions and concerns, and encourage everyone to call our office at seven-three-two-eight-two-eight-two-one-hundred. Except one thirty-six for anything they may need. Mayor, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Montanez. Next, we hear the report from Department of Parks Recreation chaired by Councilman Greiner.
Thank you, Mayor. The Recreation Director reports the following. Registration is now open. Pool season and summer camp activities. To register, use the Borough website. The Recreation Department has now finished accepting applications for seasonal summer employment at the Milltown Borough Pool and Albert Avenue Summer Recreation Camp. Interviews started last week. With spring here, please remember if you are interested in rent, renting any Milltown Park Pavilion or gazebo, please contact the Recreation Department directly to acquire a park facility usage form electronically. Improvements within our parks included a new asphalt walkway into Borough Pool. A new gate guard shack was delivered this past Friday for Pool Day pass sales. Our pardon tennis court resurfacing project is ongoing at the present time. Good things are happening here in town. Continue to make Milltown a community in motion. The Recreation Advisory Committee will meet on Wednesday, May seventeenth at seven p.m. in person. Many of the recreation programs offered by the Borough's Recreation Department are for children and teens, so the committee welcomes idea for arts, social sport, and other types of activities that kids in town would enjoy. Next time the Historic Preservation Committee meets will be on May twenty-fifth at seven-thirty p.m. This committee encourages Borough residents of all ages to value and maintain the historic architecture and elements in our community. Mayor, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Greiner. Next, we will hear the report from the Department of Environmental Health and Social Services chaired by Councilwoman Kozak.
Thank you, Mayor. The Board of Health met on April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three. Our Board of Health Inspector Victoria Orderson shared her inspection calendar for the month of March. Everyone received a satisfactory rating, but determined that the coffee bar is no longer in business. The main discussion was to review preparations and planning for the upcoming rabies clinic for cats and dogs. It is scheduled for Tuesday, May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, from six to eight p.m. The location is the DPW Garage across the street at fifty Washington Avenue. All are welcome, welcome. Mayor, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kozak. Next, we, we will hear the report from the Department of Files, Administration, and Planning chaired by Council President Wilberforce.
Thank you, Mayor. I have only a short report this evening, Mayor. I'd like to report that our budget is complete and we are moving forward with our capital plan for twenty-two thirty by introducing the three bond ordinance this evening. The next Ford Avenue Redevelopment Agency meeting will be held on May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and McCable TV will meet on May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three. Mayor, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President Wilberforce. Administrator Larson, Larson, do you have anything to report this evening?
I have no report this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, Administrator Larson. Next, we'll hear the report from the Borough Engineer Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor Hill. The following projects are presently underway or are being considered in the Borough of Milltown. The proposed improvements to Clay and Court generally include the reconstruction of the existing roadway of hot-mixed asphalt surface course, hot-mixed asphalt base course, and dense grided aggregate base course. Storm drainage system improvements, replacement of damaged concrete sidewalk and curbing where necessary, handicap, handicap ramp improvements, maintenance and protection of traffic during the improvements, landscaping, restoration, and other related work. To date, the storm sewage systems improvements have been completed and the bulk of the curb and sidewalk have been replaced. The remaining work includes the restoration of turf areas and the reconstruction of the roadway. The proposed improvements will be performed at the following locations. Water main replacement on Chestnut Street and Highland Drive, cleaning and lining of the existing water mains on Oak Avenue, East Lauren Street and Highland Drive, air release valve replacement between Elkins Lane and North Moats Drive, and a stub and water service reconfiguration almost on Avenue. The project was a bid and awarded to a contractor and the construction contract is being prepared. Mayor, this concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Engineer Ramirez. Next, we'll hear the report from Borough Attorney Kabizorov.
The Borough, sorry. The Borough Council introduced an ordinance this evening regarding its local ethics board. Over the last several decades, our local ethics board has only been called upon to conduct an investigation of the ethics complaint on a few occasions. Currently, the Borough of Milltown is only one of the six counties and twenty-eight municipalities, which has a local, local ethics board. If the borough does not have its own local ethics board, the jurisdiction for governing and guiding local government officers and employees regarding violations of the local government ethics law would be placed in the State of New Jersey, Department of Community Affairs, Division of Local Government Services, and Local Finance Board. In the light of new, in the light of the few members, in the light of the few number of ethics complaints historically received by the Borough of Milltown, as well as the fact that the majority of counties and municipalities do not maintain a local ethics board, it is in the best interest of the Borough of Milltown, its residents, and the general public to transfer the responsibility to ethics investigation to the State Local Finance Board. Tonight's ordinance is the first step of transferring the obligation for the investigation of complaints for violations of the local government ethics law to the State Local Finance Board. Mayor, this concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Attorney Kabizorov. I have nothing additional to report this evening, so I'll proceed to old business. Our reports have been concluded and I would like to open the floor to ca, to council to address any old business. Are there any matters or any people of the council, uh, would like to address? Hearing none, I will close old business. Are there any new matters? Hearing none, I will close new business. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining from any comment until the speaker has finished. It should be further noted that public comment portion of our meeting is now structured as a question-and-answer session. Please say your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Seeing none, I will close public comment. I'm going to ask that Mayor Mayor take over and request the council confirm their action to take it, taken at this meeting by the passage of Resolution one forty-five, twenty-two.
Thank you. Clerk Mahler, will you please read Resolution one forty-five, twenty-two, three, by title? Resolution one forty-five, twenty-two-three authorizes the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown to approve the actions taken by student representatives during the May eighth, twenty-twenty-three, UTHD government council meeting. What is the pleasure of the council?
Madam Mayor.
I'll second the motion to approve Resolution one forty-five dash twenty-two-three.
Our motion by Councilwoman Revolinsky, seconded by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Council President Zamburana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Paredi?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Councilman Revolinsky?
Aye.
Motion carries to pass one forty-five, twenty-two-three.
Thank you. Uh, next we have council comments. Does any of the members of the, the Borough Council have any closing comments this evening?
I do, Madam Mayor. No mind. Thank you so much. Um, I just had a quick, uh, report from the police chief in light of, um, and in response to, um, an increase in pedestrian accidents recently. Chief Kennelly modified signage in the areas of Washington Avenue and Main Street and reminds drivers, bikers, and pedestrians to be extra cautious. We're exploring options to do a safe summer streets educational, uh, type program before school lets out through our partnerships with organizations such as Keep Middlesex Moving and Safe Streets New Jersey. And from the Rescue Squad, we did mention their fundraising door-to-door, uh, happening this entire month, but also wanted to highlight that they have an open house on Saturday. Yes? Saturday, sorry. I wrote down Sunday and all of a sudden it was a big question mark in my mind. It's on Saturday. Um, and they're very excited to meet with the seniors at the senior center wrap session this week. Thank you.
Any, any other members of the council?
Hi, Madam Mayor. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank, um, all of our council people today, Mr. Dabrowski, uh, Clerk Mahler, and Mayor Merritt. You guys did a fabulous job this evening, so thank you so much for all your efforts in, in doing this. Second, uh, I would like to thank everybody who, uh, participated and joined us in our Fourth of July celebratory bartender event. It was very successful. And I'd also like to thank, uh, Mayor and council who joined us behind the bar to serve our residents. Uh, two other things, uh, Mayor Merritt and, uh, and, uh, Councilwoman Paredi, who saw you throw the first pitch at the Spotswood softball game, which the, uh, softball team won the white division with that game, so very good to see. And finally, uh, this Friday, I believe, uh, the boys' baseball team, Spotswood Baseball Team will be at Michelin Field, uh, playing at seven p.m., so welcome everybody to come out and watch. And that concludes.
Any other questions? Um, yes, so thank you, Councilwoman Potter. Congratulations to the Spotswood High School. It was really nice to see everyone out there. Um, here in Milltown playing a home game because of the, of this council to get the lights on so that the, uh, the children could use that field more efficiently and thanks to the little people who agreed, uh, picking it up. I would also like to say thank you to Dabrowski and all of our, uh, UTHD politicians and the schools for continuing this really nice tradition for the students to learn how our local government proceeds. Uh, Clerk and I had an opportunity to go over to Joyce Comfort and meet with the students to get them ready for this evening and they had, we had a really good discussion of what's, what they like about Milltown, what, what can be done to improve it. And as always, they have great ideas. It was a real pleasure having, meeting them last weekend and having them here. So let's give them a big round of. Mayor Hill did a great job, but I have one more thing. So just to clarify, um, we did have a comment about the, um, rec director being the pool director and how it wasn't appropriate on tonight's meeting. Tonight is a business meeting. Uh, all of the council people were aware of what was on there, so if anyone wanted to vote no, they certainly could have. And I think we're all aware of why that was on here tonight. We're getting ready for the pool season. But I was going to ask the, uh, business administrator to explain why the, um, rec director was, uh, you know, which the personnel and the rec community is fully aware of, um, is getting that position.
The biggest, uh, reason is that the, um, we went out to, uh, an advertise for the position and we received zero responses and that advertisement was, you know, statewide. So, um, we are required by law to have that position and so that's where we were left. And at this point, um, it is hoped that, that training will, uh, occur this year and that, uh, future years will yield a, a different result.
Thanks. And as I'm sure Councilwoman Paredi and Councilwoman Revolinsky and, who's the third person, Councilwoman Potter, who are on rec advisory, if we did have a director and we weren't following the state law, we would have had to go out and have a different company run the pool. That may have influenced the actual opening of the pool this year. So that was a decision by the pool council to do that. So thanks for that. And now I will turn it over to Mayor Hill to.
All scheduled matters have been completed for tonight. What is the pleasure of the council?
I make the motion to adjourn. I second the motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
If anyone needs to use a phone?
If anyone needs to use a phone? If you need a ride and you need to use a landline phone, you can use the phone in the phone box when you need to call.